Being involved in education actually started at elementary and junior high, at Rehoboth Beach Elementary and Junior High, halftime at the high school. Left and spent 20 years, just about 20 years at Delaware State, and then left there and got into high school administration. 10 years at Sussex Tech and eight years at Cape Pen Open High School.
Thank you. Chris Lovenguth?
Yes ma'am, my name is Chris Lovenguth. I'm 64 years old. I'm born and raised in Milton, Delaware. I have three children, nine grandchildren. I'm a 1978 graduate of the Cape Pen Open High School. Again, I've worked for Napa Auto Parts for 47 years. Been grounded right here in the Milton area and Cape District. I have two grandchildren that will be going to the Cape District within the next year. And so that's me.
All right. Thank you. So moving on to District C, Patty Mall.
Hello, my name's Patty Mall and I'm running for Area C seat. My husband and I both are Cape graduates. We have four children, two who are juniors at Cape today. Over the years, I volunteered in our schools from classroom mom, helping at lunch and recess, our holiday program for our homeless families. I was booster president for marching band for three years. And I'm currently a mentor to two students in our district, one at Beacon Middle School and one at Cape High School. My number one role has always been to advocate for my children from navigating the education system to ensuring that they have every opportunity to succeed. That passion will not stop with my own children and it will extend to supporting our families in our district.
Okay, thank you. Laura Parsons?
Hi, I'm Laura Parsons and I am the mother of three young boys, all in the Cape District in grades kindergarten, third and fifth. I see life through their eyes and experiences. And I am here for the long run, having spent six years already in the district with 12 more to go. I'm deeply connected to the heart of the school community. I bring fresh ideas, hope and vision for a better tomorrow for all of our students. I have a strong academic and work experience background for leadership. I have a degree in international business, marketing and Spanish. I am bilingual and I'm a business owner. I know how to work in teams and partnerships to get things done. I also have a degree in nursing with a solid background in understanding the health and safety needs of children and their families. And I have an established network of agencies and partners to work with. My commitment to the community is strong. My family and I chose to move here 13 years ago to raise our children in the wonderful, safe and friendly environment that our beach community is. My husband and I support many community events and activities such as the Boys and Girls Club, Gals That Give, the Cape Pen Open Educational Fund. We're a family committed to our community and I'd very much like to step up to the next level of leadership by becoming a school board member. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're gonna start our questions. I'm gonna start with the at-large seat. What do you believe are the key roles and responsibilities of a school board member? Chris?
The main thing is to be in contact with our teachers. Basically because they're on the front line, they know exactly what's going on day in and day out. Also, we have to stay in contact with our SROs, the cafeteria staff and the custodians. The big thing is, is making sure that our teachers have exactly what they need in order to teach our children.
Thank you. Bill?
Well, I think the real key is to be able to supervise our school district and as a board member, be involved with determining policy and adopting rules and regulations for the general administration of our, the supervision of our, our school district. All our schools' policies should be conducted and be in concert with Delaware's laws, policies, rules and regulations of the State Board of Education.
All right, thank you. Moving to District C, Laura?
Keeping the best interest of all of the children at the forefront of our decision-making is a primary responsibility of the school board, of school board member. Student, parent and teacher advocacy to ensure that the policies that protect the safety of our students, teachers and families are intact, watertight and being upheld fully by staff. Also making sure that the staff has the resources and support that they need to do their job to the very highest level and not reach burnout. We need to be a community liaison and to serve as a bridge between the district and our community. We need to manage taxpayer dollars responsibly. And finally, we need to meet and exceed the educational standards that we set for our children. As we know, Cape Pen Open's state test scores exceed every other district in the state. However, we can't rest on what those numbers currently are. We need to always push for greater excellence.
Thank you. Patty?
The role of a public school board is to set the vision and goals for our schools, make policies that support all students' success and ensure accountability throughout the district. We hire and evaluate the superintendent throughout the, we hire and evaluate the superintendent, we oversee the budget and most importantly, we listen and represent the community. Everything we do as a board should always focus on creating safe and effective schools for all of our students, no matter their backgrounds. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura?
She just answered that.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
So we've done too many of these. All right, we are moving on now to the next question. And we are gonna start with, um, the District C. That's why I got confused. How would you approach decision-making to ensure transparency, accountability and community trust? Patty?
I feel we need to approach decision-making by being open, inclusive and data-driven. We must clearly communicate the reasons behind decisions and make information accessible to all public. Building community trust requires active listening to diverse voices, encouraging public input and filing through on our commitments. Thank you.
Laura?
We need to make sure that the community understands the decisions and the policies that the board makes. We need to make it more understandable, accessible and less intimidating. One member can't do anything alone. We need the backing of the full board. We need teamwork, collaboration, understanding, seeing all sides of issues, being open-minded and flexible. Putting all children first should be at the forefront of all decision-making. Trust and transparency is a huge thing to me. In my business and private practice, every single patient of mine has my phone number and I can be reached at any time. I respond in a timely manner and address questions and concerns. I'm not saying that I'm giving my phone number to every person in the district. However, if someone reaches out to me via our, the district provided email, my pledge is that you will receive a response. And if I don't know the answer, I will get it for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're gonna move to the at-large, at-large district. Bill?
I would approach a decision-making that ensures transparency, accountability and community trust by way of hiring quality and committed instructors that will set goals and take ownership for high school students, for, for all school student achievement with a vision of high expectations. Furthermore, I would seek an ongoing transparent relationship with building leaders and all staff of each building in order that we realize that each one of us are responsible for the goals and expectations of our schools and students. These expectations will range from test scores of students through the culture and climate of each building. All of the above must begin by way of a unified board that supports the superintendent as a team. Also, I would welcome the formation of a community liaison committee. And we have one now that's reflective of all of our communities and will be responsible for teaching and helping to develop elements of trust, strong shared beliefs and values that are pillars for overall excellence.
Thank you. Chris?
Yes, we have to be open-minded in everything that we do when we're making decisions, especially letting the community know exactly what we're doing. Without the community knowing exactly what we're doing, you know, that puts, that puts false narratives to the community. So we have to be transparent in everything that we say and that we do. When we have to gain trust to the community, a lot of times people really don't realize what's going on with the school board unless there's a referendum coming up. And so with making exactly, knowing that everybody knows what's going on in the community, that's what, that's what making decisions are all about.
Thank you. Moving on to the next question, we're gonna stick with the at-large district. How would you work with other board members, the superintendent and the community to ensure effective governance? Chris?
Well, we have to have open discussion. As a board, we all have different ideas and different ways that we go about things. But we have to have open discussion and that's best for everyone. Listening is the biggest, is the biggest part. A lot of times we don't listen, we're more worried about what our decision is. And we have to be more open-minded. You know, we gotta get out into, to the community, find out exactly what they're talking about, what their suggestions may be, bring it back to the board. And then that way we can work together, bringing the proper things that the community and our school district needs.
Thank you.
Would you repeat, repeat that question again, please?
Sure can. How would you work with other board members, the superintendent and the community to ensure effective governance?
I think without a doubt that, that you have to be a, a, a team with your, with your board. And I think the big thing is you have to trust your superintendent to actually be at schools, assistant superintendent to know what's going on. And, and then I, again, I think that community liaison committee is so important and that you have people in the community on that community liaison committee that will actually give you their voice and that they, they know and understand that their voice means something and that they are being listened to.
Thank you. We'll move back over to District C, Laura?
To be most effective on the board, I would wanna dive into policies for clearer understandings and ask the hard questions. Second thing that I would insist on is collaboration, collaboration and more collaboration. Being open-minded is critical. And I would request the same from the district and from the community. In the community, it's important to always have an open ear, no matter how big or small the issue is, and make sure that people feel heard. Being accountable and honest, when policies or procedures are not working, to make them better and to redistribute funds to use them more wisely. I believe in trust and transparency always. Asking for input and being open to new ideas and alternative solutions. We can't just rest on it's always been done this way.
Thank you. Patty?
I would start off by building a strong respectful relationship with fellow board members, the superintendent and most importantly, our community by prioritizing collaboration, open communication and shared goals. I would stay engaged, listen actively and ensure transparency so that all voices are heard and trusted in our decision-making progress. So in the end, all of our students have successful education.
All right, thank you. Our next area of questions, we're gonna focus on student outcomes and teaching and learning. District C will go first. What steps would you take as a school board member to improve student outcomes? Patty?
As a school board member, I would improve student outcomes by setting clear, obtainable goals, supporting strong leadership and ensuring that we provide equitable resources. I will listen to our families, educators and stay committed to policies that put all students' success first. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura?
I believe that we need to examine all measures of student outcomes and work to improve them. By using the combination of direct and indirect measures, educators can gain a comprehensive understanding of student learning and program effectiveness. Direct measures include homework, quizzes, exams, reports, that kind of thing. And indirect measures include course evaluations, student surveys, course enrollment information, retention in courses, exit interviews, graduation rates and job and college placement. This information can then be used to improve teaching practices, enhance the curriculum and to ensure that all students are achieving the desired learning outcomes. Also, we need to not solely look at data outputs, but look at the inputs as well and examine the root causes. We need to examine the barriers to education, including poverty, food insecurity, homelessness, overcrowding and social and emotional health and work to mitigate those. We must also better support our teachers so that they can effectively teach our students. Furthermore, reducing classroom distractions, including cell phones, would enhance teaching and learning.
Thank you. We're gonna move to the at-large district. Bill, you'll be first this time.
Okay, I, I really think that the steps that I would take to improve our student outcomes would be to ensure that all students are, are connected holistically with our schools by way of expectations. And we, we have tremendous amount of, of support. We have social workers, behavior counselors, the school psychiatrists, guidance counselors, teachers, administrators, as well as mentors and tutors. And I think if we can get our, our students connected to that group. And one of the big things that, that we do have is that we, we have adults that will support our students and that's, that's so important. I think every student really needs a, an adult supporter.
Okay, Chris?
Two main things. The teachers need help. Our teachers need absolutely everything that they can get in order to teach our children. I feel that our teachers are so far behind on everything that they need from copy paper to, you know, in order for, for teachers to be able to work in this, in the class with these iPads and things like that. A lot of times children are coming to school with iPads or, or completely dead and now the teacher's spending time taking care of those things. One big thing is kids need to be in school. By knocking on doors, I'm finding out that, you know, that the attendance level is atrocious with kids getting to school. And then when a kid is out for 15, 20, even 30 days, then that teacher has that much more to try to get that kid back up to where it needs to be. And so it's very hard for teachers to, with this class sizes like they are, to be able to give quality time to each child. And I think that's what we need, you know, the most of is, is making sure that our teachers have everything they possibly need. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next question, we will stay with our at-large district. How would you support efforts to ensure all students have access to a high-quality education, regardless of their background or learning? Chris?
I would support qualified parents to help our, our teachers out. You know, we need qualified parents when it comes to special education and helping in the class. Like I said, when the teachers are trying their best to take care of each child and make sure each child gets exactly what they need, it takes a lot of time. And so I would, I would say that we need qualified parents, qualified in special ed, qualified in reading, qualified in, in other things that can help our teachers when they're trying to do a quality job for our children. Thank you.
Okay. Bill?
I'm a truly big pro of adult support. And so I would support efforts to ensure that all students have access to high-quality education, regardless of their background or learning needs, by way of making sure that our students have an adult supporter from our faculty, staff, from members of our tutors and mentors foundation, such as Pathways to Success. Also, our, our school district has ment, has a wonderful mentoring program that meets with students each week. Furthermore, I like our advisory period. We have an advisory period at the Cape Pen Open High School in the morning for about 30 minutes that kids can get extra help from their teachers as well as tutors and mentors that come out. Throughout our school district, I think we prioritize reading and, and with my way of implementing the science of reading, our kids are asked to read, our elementary people are asked to read 30 minutes a night. It's an evidence-based approach that fosters essential reading skills from kindergarten through high school. For instance, we learn to read so that later on we can read to learn. We also have a math situation there that we're doing right now. And we continue with our high-quality curriculum and incorporate real-world applications. We also further develop teaching to implement effective strategies by way of using engaging resources such as, we have a math specialist now that, that really will find out what kids are having problems. So that's how we do it.
Thank you. Your time is up. All right, District C, Laura?
I am adamant that every child deserves a high-quality and inclusive education. We must have the resources to address the unique needs of each child. We need to look at the specific needs of each child and modify methods and tools that they need for success. Expanding enrichment opportunities such as tutoring and extended learning before, after school and during the summer is important. We need to make sure that the curriculum addresses children of every background. Furthermore, continual professional development of teachers to ensure that they have the resources and education to support, encourage and the ability to connect with every child is critical. I'm also in favor of a per-people-weighted funding formula so that money funding is based on need. We need furthermore to engage families in our school board decision-making process. We need to understand what they need. We need to ask them what they need and what we can do to help them. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty?
I would support efforts to ensure all students have access to a high-quality education by advocating for equity in funding, inclusive curriculum and strong support services. We can do this by identifying and addressing barriers faced by underserved students, including those with disabilities, English language learners and students from low-income families. We need to make sure we are up to date on available resources, a safe and supportive environment where all students can thrive. Listening to families and communities is also very important and to understanding and meeting diverse student needs. Thank you.
Okay, our next question, we're gonna move on to community engagement and school climate. We are gonna stay with District C. How would you engage families, educators and the broader community in school board decision-making? Please provide an example of how you have worked to strengthen community and family engagement. We're gonna start with Laura.
Can you repeat that again? I lost my order.
How would you engage families, educators and the broader community in school board decision-making? Please provide an example of how you have worked to strengthen community and family engagement.
Sure. Okay. So those were two separate questions in the, originally, but, okay. And so first of all, I think it's critical to keep families engaged. We don't want families to be involved a few times and then, and then disappear. We need to keep them active. We need to build relationships and meet the people where they are. We need to create welcoming environments where people feel comfortable talking and collaborating. Board meetings can be intimidating and stale. We need to incorporate more and varied places to engage with our community. We need to maximize the amazing resources of the community members that can lead clubs, lead career days and be mentors for our children. We need to get school board meetings online in a faster time to make sure that families know what's happening. And we also need to make sure that they know that they are welcome to meetings and that they have a voice. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Patty?
I, we're on question one, right? How would we?
Yeah, I guess it was a combination of, of the.
Yes, I got you. I would create open, consistent channels for communication through board, board meetings, in-person or Zoom, surveys and school visits. I'd actively listen to concerns, invite parents' input early in the decision-making process and make sure they feel heard and respected. Ultimately, I believe strong community engagement leads to better informed decisions and stronger supports for our schools. Currently, I, like I said in introduction, I am a mentor. So I try to let our community know about the opportunities of becoming a mentor for our schools. And I also try and to attend our community minority liaison meetings because that's a really good opportunity for our community to come in and get involved and learn about what's going on and how they can help our schools. Thank you.
Our at-large candidates, we'll start with Chris.
While knocking on doors and, and really listening to people, it seems like a lot of times that the only time that they ever hear from the school board or anything like that is just at referendum time. So I, I, with talking with the community, I think that they would be more open if we could put up a, our email address and adding minutes to possibly our last meetings to let them know exactly what's going on. Trying to get people involved is a big thing. And so getting out in the community and letting them know that, you know, you have an opportunity to, to reach out to the school and, you know, set up a time where you can go in and, and watch students and, and see what's going on with the teaching and, and things like that. Opening up the doors to our schools. I, I know, you know, there's gotta be a, you know, the SROs and, and things like that to make sure that our kids are safe. But I really feel that our community really needs to be more in touch with the schools besides just when a referendum comes around. Thank you.
Bill?
I'd engage families and educators and the broader community in school board decisions and, and making, making decisions by way of using the community liaison committee. We have a community liaison committee that we meet monthly and it's almost a roundtable and then we discuss everything from hiring practices to, to, to test scores. We just had one that we discussed retention, hiring and retention. And we've done a really nice job of, of getting some of our parents to go back to school and get teaching degrees. So I think when you engage with people and let them know that you care, let them know that they're a big part of what we're doing, I, I think it gives you an opportunity to, to, to make for a better way of, of a community coming together to support kids and to support a school district.
All right, thank you. We're gonna stay with the at-large for our next question. What role should the school board play in ensuring a safe and supportive school climate for students and staff? Uh, Bill, sorry.
The role that the school board should play, in my opinion, is to ensure a safe and supportive school climate for students and staff should be one of what I call mind in the store. And what I mean by that is inspection of the, of the code of conduct and to see if that it is being enforced and can it be enforced. It is something that we can do and it is understood by our complete staff, our students and our parents. They're really important. I think building leaders and teachers must be on, on record who, how they handle the, how they daily handle these type of operations. I've always stopped at things like the cell phone, the dress code. Those things are so important and, and really establishing a good, safe school. A copy of the code of conduct should be sent home and is to parents. Code of conduct should be discussed in the assembly at the beginning of school. And then I've always been a big proponent of making sure that, that monthly we have those, that advisory period and that things with the code of conduct that are gone over, things especially that you see that aren't maybe going as well as you should, as they should be going. that aren't maybe going as well as you should, as they should be going.
All right, thank you. Chris?
A number one priority is is I think that uh, you know, during day one that each in each school that uh, the students know our SROs, that they know that they're safe, that there's someone there that's gonna protect them. Making sure that, you know, uh, that teachers also know what's going on and um, is everything still good?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, making sure that uh, you know, with the code of conduct, uh, like we said before, that the kids know that actions have consequences and that uh, that that the families uh, in the community know with their children being there that there is a code of conduct. And there there will be um, uh, you know, if there are certain actions that are that are happening in the school, that there is consequences. But number one priority is making sure uh, that our SROs are introduced and that people know that 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 this is a safe area. And uh, kids should never be afraid of going to school. You know, I I think our teachers are great. I've talked to a lot of them. Uh, you know, they they cherish these kids. They, you know, just like their own. And uh, so that's that's the main thing.
Thank you. Moving over to District C, Patty?
Um, I feel we should play a leadership role in ensuring a safe and supportive school climate by setting clear policies, prioritizing safety and the well-being of our students, and holding the district accountable. This includes funding for mental health resources, staff training, anti-bullying initiatives, and maintaining safe, inclusive learning environments. As a board, we need to work closely with our school administrations, families, and the community to create a culture where students and staff feel valued, supported, and secure at all times. Thank you.
All right. Laura?
We need to keep our kids safe. The safety of our children is of utmost importance. We need constant collaboration with our educators. They are in the classrooms with our children and they have vital answers to the questions that we have. In order to foster positive school environments, we need to encourage strong connections between students, teachers, peers, and the community to create a sense of belonging which can help deter bullying, harassment, and violence. We need to teach students effects effective communication and de-escalation skills to prevent conflicts from escalating into violence. We need to foster an environment where students feel safe and valued, reducing the likelihood of bullying and victimization. We need community support and intervention. By collaborating with local mental health agencies, community violence intervention programs, and other support services, we can provide assist assistance to students and families. We need to involve parents in our school safety initiatives, promoting positive parenting practices, and providing resources for addressing mental health concerns. We need to strengthen our school security by continuous training on safety protocols. And we need to ensure that there are mental health counselors on site in order to identify and address potential risk factors among students to create a positive school environment.
Thank you. We're gonna stay stay with District C for our next question. How should school boards balance the needs for school safety, a positive learning environment, and fair discipline policies? Patty?
Our school. What was that? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. We'll start with you. Sorry. That was a delay.
Yes, okay. Our school which uh, boards should balance school safety, positive learning environment, and fair discipline policies by focusing on prevention, equity, and consistency. This means investing in mental health support, conflict resolution programs, and staff training to adjust address issues before they escalate. Disciplinary policies should be clear, age-appropriate, and applied fairly to all of our students. The goal should always be to create a safe school where every student feels respected and supported at all times. Thank you.
Laura?
Our policies and expectations need to be clear and concise. Teachers need proper support to be able to focus on teaching. And admin and other resources need to work on behaviors more. We need to focus on restorative justice techniques, including mediation, conflict resolution. Sorry, I'm choking. Uh, conflict resolution programs, family group conferences, and other other supports of these of this nature, which can perpetuate cycles of violence and harm that exhaust, which can perpetuate cycles of violence and harm, exacerbate poverty, and disproportionately affect marginalized communities. And again, like I said before, we need to foster positive school environments by encouraging strong connections between students, peers, and teachers to build a sense of community and belonging, teach effective communication, and foster environments where where students feel safe and valued. And once again, I'm gonna hammer it one more time home, collaboration with local mental health agencies and other programs that can provide services to assist our students and families.
Thank you. Moving back over to that at-large district, Bill?
Uh, I think the school board uh, should balance the need for school safety and positive learning environments and fair with fair discipline policy by way of coming to an understanding in terms with our complete faculty, our staff, and our parents, as well as our students. Effective schools are run uh, by supportive adults and order. Therefore, the school board must help determine and put into place educational policies of policies of the district and prescribe rules, code of conduct, and be able to manage it with regulations for conduct and the management of, again, our schools in the district. I really, when we talk about safety, I'm really uh, happy that we've been able to uh, able to put a resource officer as well as a a constable in every school. And as I visit schools, I also look at what the uh, architects have done as relates to being able to enter our schools with the interests. And so I I really feel great about that. And I do feel that our students students feel safe. The real deal is we all know that you're only as good as the last day of the first episode. But I really think that we've made some real progress with regards to our kids feeling safe in school.
Thank you. Chris?
I think uh, one of the main things here is having special meetings with our teachers. Like I said, our teachers are on the front lines. They are there day in and day out. They know exactly what's going on with our students. Uh, they know uh, they know they see the happenings in the classroom. And uh, so uh, having having special meetings with teachers, also one-on-one with uh, teachers. Uh, teachers should never be afraid to reach out to the board if they have a a question uh, that is gonna make things a lot better for our school district. So I think, you know, with our teachers being on the front line and even the staff, when you have uh, a lot of custodians and things like that that are in and out and and they interact with the with the uh, with the kids. And a lot of kids feel safe even going to a custodian and things like that. But we gotta make sure that discipline is carried out. You know, we have uh, a a code of conduct book and um, there are so many things in there. And uh, you know, if if we don't apply those things and then uh, you know, we're doing the children a dishonest. So I think that's some of the main things is being able to focus and meeting with our teachers.
Thank you. Uh, we have one more question um, in the community engagement and school climate um, section. We're gonna stick with the at-large district. What are your views on the role of schools in supporting students' social, emotional well-being? Where do you see room for improvement? Chris, we'll start with you.
Uh, teachers and counselors uh, uh, being able to talk to each other each day. Like I said, with the teachers being on the front lines, uh, people really don't realize. And and I didn't either until I started knocking on doors and 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 talking to teachers. Uh, we really don't realize what the teachers see every single solitary day. And uh, they can see the ups and downs in children. Uh, so I think with our teachers being able to reach out uh, to the counselors and uh, letting letting them know what they're seeing in a daily basis, uh, and talking to each other. When a teacher uh, sees problems, um, you know, they can talk to each other. And uh, they see all and they and they can take care of a lot of things, uh, just noticing what our children are going through on a daily basis.
Thank you. Bill?
My my views on the role of schools in supporting students' social and emotional well-being are that schools, school staff should have an ongoing in-service in order to be kept abreast of student actions or needs as it relates to the social and emotional well-being of our students. If at any point there may be any question to the above, I think our s- our school faculty and staff should direct the students in question and uh, or direct the student to the nurse or the nurse to the student. But when we look at the the support we have, there's nurses, social workers, behavior specialists, student counselors, uh, the school psychiatrists, and and in the high school, the wellness center as well. Uh, so there are people there to take care of our kids, which certainly need to get them where they need to get. As it relates to room for improvement in the above matter, I feel there must be probably more uh, effective in-service time for faculties, you see, faculty and staff in order that they they become a better acquainted as to what maybe they're looking at.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Uh, next, we're going to District C, and we will start with Laura.
I believe that schools are a microcosm of a larger soc- of a larger society where the social and emotional well-being is critical to support. The children spend more time at school and around their teachers and peers than they do at home. They're navigating relationships, testing social interactions and hierarchies, and learning the benefits of co- the benefits and consequences of how they interact with that, with each, with others. That said, having the appropriate staff to support the children through these challenging times is critical. This includes identifying and intervening with children who are struggling and getting them help before a situation unravels, looking at the root causes of behavioral issues and addressing them, and having one-to-one services available at the time of need in the schools. It's also maintaining a robust curriculum regarding social and emotional health that teaches students how to manage their emotions. Room for improvement? We need more staff. We need more staff and greater continuous training for teachers and counselors. We need to have staff in the schools to help the children and not outsourcing it, especially in our most of most vulnerable age group, middle school and above. And we need to absolutely take a deeper look into cellphone and iPad policies. This is a particularly vulnerable area.
Okay, Patty?
I believe it's a very important role for the school board. When students feel safe, supported, and understood, they're more likely to succeed academically and socially. As a board, we can create positive, inclusive environments, offering mental health resources, and teaching skills like emotional regulation, empathy, and conflict resolution. By doing this, we help our students build resilience, manage stress, and form healthy relationships, laying the foundation for a successful future. As for improvement, we can always improve by, I would like to see more mental health counselors in our schools to take some of the pressure off of our social workers and our count psychologists that we have in our schools now.
Thank you. We're now gonna move on to school finance and resource allocation. We'll um, stay with District C. How would you approach financial decision-making to ensure schools are using resources effectively and responsibly? Laura?
We need to monitor data, public policy, and legislation continuously. These include student demographics and achievement data, enrollment trends, financial reviews, state fund and state funding formulas, among others. Since district finances are closely tied to enrollment and per pupil funding allowances, recognizing and analyzing trends allows finance officers to make data decision, data-driven decisions, proactively create projections, and anticipate impending challenges. This is especially critical with all the growth in our area. We need to minimize unnecessary administrative costs. We need to have a, we need to have strong colla- collaboration with our CFO and superintendent. And we must be good stewards of our public funds. We need open dialogue with our teachers. What re- what are your res- are your resources effective? What do you need? And we need to be open from input from teachers, PTOs, parents, and the community. And also be open to innovative and cost-saving solutions. We need to look at what other districts are doing across the country. Be open to new ideas and doing things differently than we've done them in the past.
Okay, Patty?
I would approach financial decision-making with transparency, equity, and long-term impact in mind. This would mean focusing on student needs and district goals. I'd advocate for responsible budgeting that support both academic success and student well-being while also engaging the community to build trust and accountability. Every dollar should be spent with students' best interest at the center of our decisions. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to at-large district, we'll start with Bill.
I I do believe that we currently are very transparent with how we spend money. And I I, the way we approach it now is basically just about four tiers uh, that that we make sure that schools are using resources effectively and responsibly. Approach begins with the accountability and sign-off from the teacher, the principal, and then the chief finance, financial officer, as well as uh, we have a budget oversight a committee, and they have members that that uh, look at this along with the chief financial officer. And then uh, at monthly at the school board uh, uh, meeting, actually the entire budget, like what we have spent and what we're doing and what it was for, is actually uh, done at at the school board meeting. So uh, I do believe that we're working quite hard to make sure that we are spending money and our resources effectively.
Thank you. Chris?
Open conversation is the big thing. The board must always uh, look for opportunities to save money, but in turn, put the money into proper places to ensure the uh, proper learning for our children. Um, when we get out into the community and be transparent and let them know exactly what we're doing, uh, the money needs to be put exactly where it needs to be put, and that's with the student and the teachers. The teachers are 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 frontline. The teachers are the ones that that help us in in every way possible. And uh, so our money has to be put uh, out there. Open conversation, when I say open conversation, each board member, you know, has different ideas and things like that. And uh, you know, I may have a certain idea, someone else has another idea. Uh, we need to work together. And uh, but the open conversation is the big thing when it comes to finance. Thanks.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to the next question. We'll um, start with the at-large candidates first. What are your views on the referendum process as a means for school districts to raise funds for operational and capital expenses? We'll start with Bill.
Well, I certainly uh, did vote for the referendum the last two times and they failed and certainly disappointed. I do believe that uh, uh, it is a process that has worked. I do believe it needs to be begin with um, actually the state giving the certificate of necessity. I think that's the first thing. I think when you get that, then you are able to get uh, more uh, of your community to be involved and and look at the need. I I go back to uh, in two thousand ten, there were a thousand fifty students at Cape Pen Open High School. Today, there are two thousand. Go down any road from twenty-four to sixteen to to nine, and the houses are just unbelievable. So I do think that we need to get that in order. I did see that the county council as well is looking at uh, the maybe doing some things with the assessment like um, uh, Newcastle and Kent do today. So I think that's a part of what has to happen. Hopefully, we can come together and and want to make sure that we're doing what we can to make sure that our schools are properly funded. You look down the road, we're gonna have to look at property somewhere simply because we don't simply uh, we're gonna have to build more. We just are. It's it's called vision.
Thank you. Chris?
Uh, really, we really need to be upfront at all times with our community. Uh, when it comes time uh, for building finance on referendums and things like that, uh, the key, the community really needs to know uh, what we're doing with the money. Uh, what we're seeing with with numbers being down is is uh, we, students being up, but numbers being down as far as uh, our student numbers. Uh, you know, we need to make sure that we have the proper money and finances that we need to take care. Uh you know, we need to make sure that we have the proper money and finances that we need to take care of our students. Our students are are are, you know, our up-and-coming generation. And uh you know, we have to, we have to funnel money uh to make sure that our students are learning uh our basics, back to uh our reading, our writing, and our math. And uh this day and time, kids, uh you know, if they, if they can't read and they can't write and they don't know basic math, uh it's it's going to be hard for them uh to to live in the in this state of mind right now. So we have to be upfront with the community, let them know uh what the money's going for, making sure that the money is processed towards the students so the students get a quality education.
All right, thank you. District C, we'll start with Patty.
Um I definitely do believe in referendums. Um in the past, it has always worked for us. Um unfortunately, there has been so much growth and change in our community that we can't always depend on referendums um to pass like we went through with our last two. Uh with that being said, we must depend on our local county council to help us by imposing an impact fee for all new builds so that when we are in the situation that we are in now with not being able to pass a referendum, we can count on the impact fees. Thank you.
All right, Laura?
So interestingly enough, there is currently a bipartisan education funding commission underway in Dover that's looking at the ways that state uh look at the way the state formula works for allocating uh state dollars. As a part of it, they're looking at what can be done to reform the current referendum process. The state of Deli- Delaware is on one of only a handful of states that asks its public to vote on increases that are at or below the rate of enrollment. So as far as referendums actually go, referendums tend to be only voted on by a small minority of the population. I believe that if the processes, I believe, if these processes were were something that occurred more frequently and done in a different way, then the rate of increase would be smaller and better accepted by the community. While school referendums are intended to benefit schools, they can inadvertently create stress, division, and conflict with within a community due to financial concerns, differing opinions, and priorities, lack of trust and transparency, and potential for long-term consequences. So ultimately, the lingering disagreements and strained relationships within the community can have lasting effects after the referendum vote. I hear this on a daily basis. I do believe that there is a better way.
All right, we'll move on to the next question. We're going to stay with District C. Delaware is considering changing, changes to its school funding formula. What are your thoughts on how school funding should be structured to better serve students? We'll start with Patty.
Um I feel Delaware's school funding should move toward a formula that allocates resources based on student needs um and not growth, such as poverty, English language learners, and dis- disabilities rather than our enrollment rate. This would ensure more equity across our district and give our schools the flexibility to support, to support students more tha- more effectively and is support that student and as a person, as one, and not a whole group of students. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Laura.
I believe that we need to create a fair and equitable educational environment. Our unit-based formula is antiquated. It was initiated in the nineteen forties. We must move to a per-pupil weighted funding formula so that money funding is based on need. So, like I said, it is based on need, and it uh so the signs a base amount for each student and then adds additional funding based on specific student char- characteristics and needs, like low-income status, special education, English, English language learners. Unit-based funding, which is what we currently have, allocates funding for positions and services like teachers and counselors rather than directly to individual students. The weighted per-pupil funding method is a common approach used in in many states to ensure that schools receive adequate record, adequate resources to ports, to support students with diverse needs, and this is critical. All the states surrounding Delaware utilize this method. Um the Education Commission, the Education Funding Commission has actually stated the goal that they will hold districts harmless if they do make these modifications, which means that they will not take money away from the district, which is a concern of many people for going in this direction of funding.
Thank you. Next, the at-large seats, at at-large seats. We'll start with Chris.
Uh my understanding, uh the state wants to shift funds for lower-income communities and students with disabilities. The new framework aims to provide schools with more flexibility in how they uh use state funds, allowing the school to tailor its uh resources uh to the needs of the student and to the communities. Thank you.
All right, Bill?
Ca- currently, our our funding is based on what is called a unit count, is based on the the amount of how many students you have. And as you get X amount of students, you get, you get more money, and that's kind of where we are now. It is, in my opinion, very clear and accountable. It really is. Certainly, we can certainly look at other ways and see how we can better do it. But you know, a certain amount of money for the special ed and ELL, and so we we are, I think, in a in a position of being very clear and accountable. Uh I think the thing what is if we can find ways to do it better, so be it. But I do believe right now that our, it is very fair the way that uh uh we get our funds from the state.
All right, thank you. We're going to move on now to questions about um school choice and policy considerations. Uh we're going to stick with the at-large district first. What are your views on school choice, including charter schools? And how do you believe school boards should approach this issue? We will start with uh. Let me see. Chris?
Okay, school choice is has always been a a difficult thing for me because I love my school. I I graduated from Cape. My 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 uh family has been uh part of the Cape and Lopen School District forever. Um if we make our schools the best, nobody's going to look to go to uh a a charter school or any other schools. Uh Cape is a great district. Uh we love the school. We have great schools. We have great teachers. Uh we have great community. The community just needs to know more about the Cape and Lopen School District and uh trying to get them more involved. And uh you know, if we have to knock on doors, if we have to make special meetings, uh that's the big thing. But uh to make sure that our standards are high, uh that way, our community knows that our school district, our teachers are the best, and their children are going to learn uh best that they can learn uh from the Cape and Lopen School District.
All right, thank you, Bill.
I I will say to you that when I look at uh individuals moving to this area, attempting to uh choose into Cape and Lopen, w- we certainly uh are still the uh the the school of choice i- in Sussex County, we really are, and and veritably, we have to turn people down because they don't live in this district, and we don't take it in that sense of take kids if they're not living in the district choice-wise. You know, when we look at uh sort of charter schools and e- everybody doesn't have to go to Cape and Lopen, I will say this to you, our 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 district and our schools are to the point that we have uh we've had kids who lived in the area go to charter school and then come back to Cape and Lopen. So I do want to say that, that when I look at Cape and Lopen, it is still the school of choice in this area.
All right, thank you. In District C candidates, we have Laura first.
As far as choicing in, our schools are already overburdened. So I support the measures we currently have in place to limit incoming students barring extenuating circumstances called good cause, such as a change in a child's residence, a change in a child's parent's marital status, a change caused by guardianship proceedings, placement of a child in foster care, adoption, et cetera. It's wonderful that so many people are attracted to our district that says volumes. How we, however, we need to support the children in our district who are already here first. As far as choosing out of our district, I believe that tax money paid by taxpayers for the public school systems should not go towards private education with personal goals, whether they are relig- religious schools, parochial schools, home schools, et cetera. Public money should stay in the public system. I do believe that any child should go wherever fits them best, but not with taxpayer money. I do also feel that we should look into stu- why students don't want to stay in the district and choice out. What can we provide differently? Is there a vocation? It is, is it a certain pathway? We need to look deep into this and see how we're able to meet students' needs before they leave.
Thank you. Patty?
Um I believe that fa- families should have access to high-quality education, but school choice should not come at the expense of our public schools. Our school board should ensure that charter schools and other private schools must be held to the same standards as public schools, and funding formula should not weaken the resources available to this public, public school system. Thank you.
Um this is our last question. We are going to stick with District C. What policies or initiatives do you think would best support students experiencing poverty or homelessness, particularly regarding access to food and other basic needs? We are going to start with Patty.
Um our district has uh resources in place to address these needs. We have um, we follow the McKinney-Vento Act that is a federal law that protects the educational rights and ensures access to services for our homeless um population in our district. We also have a food pantry in our schools, and we also do the backpack program that provides foods for our students and their families. I feel we must continue to make these programs available and also have access to outside resort, resources for our students and that so they can have a successful learning experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Kids cannot learn if they're dealing with hunger, homelessness, and poverty. They simply cannot come to school ready to learn with these horrible burdens. I believe that the district needs to collaborate with other organizations and social agencies to build a stronger community and get these families the help that they need in the moment and the skills that they need to get into a be- to get to a better place. We need to ask for and accept help. We need to lean on the expertise and guidance of so many wonderful and smart people in our community. Our schools have boundaries and limitations. Its primary job is to educate, but we can't do it with all of these other social barriers. It's critical to strengthen the collaborations within the communities. I believe that this is one of my strengths. I'm a connector and a delegator, and I could use this within the school board to enrich the lives of the kids. One specific policy that I believe would support all of our students is the Universal School Lunch and Breakfast Program. A fed child is able to learn. This is one burden that's tangible, and we can fix pretty easily. Food insecurity in our district is a real thing. Many families who aren't eligible for income-based assistance still need help obtaining food. Offering free or reduced meal, reduced meals reduces financial and social barriers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris?
Uh when the school knows that a child and 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 I and I always go back to the teachers because the teachers are, like I said, are on the front line. When the school knows that a child and their family are going through very difficult times, uh we can supply food and and basics there, you know, from the school, you know, to every child. But we need to have outlets uh to help our community, uh local churches, and uh also uh to get information to those families. There's different programs called uh TANF, Temporary Assistance for Needy Families. There's also SNAP, which is Supplemental Nutrient Assistance Programs. And that uh it, you know, by us having those things, being able to get to those families, let them know about these different organizations that can possibly help them, uh turning them onto one of our local churches that are very willing to help out in so many different ways. Um that's what the community does to help uh our families. Thank you.
Bill?
The policies or initiatives that are best for students gaining support when they are experiencing poverty or homelessness and need access to food or other basic needs are as follows in the Cape and Lopen School District. With so many responsibilities in the Cape and Lopen School District, other than an instruction of students, we look at uh sus- when we look at societal problems, we must remember that students who enter our schools are a microcosm of our society. The same thing that's going on a- a- in our society is going on in school. Therefore, our students who face poverty, homelessness, or other needs can get breakfast at lunch in school. Also, they may get food from our food branches to take home. Elementary students take or can participate in the backpack program, and parents just need to sign them up uh as our food programs are alive and well. Also, our faculty and staff are asked to monitor our students as well as our students being able to go to our social workers, our behavior counselors, guidance counselors, school psychiatrists, and our homeless liaison. We have homeless liaison that works in the Cape and Lopen School just furthermore, our students can get hotel vouchers or transportations, whether homeless as well as clothes and school supplies when needed.
All right, thank you. So that was the last of the questions that we had prepared for the candidates. Um if you look in the chat, if you have a question, go ahead and throw it in there. We may have a time to do one or two sort of rapid-fire questions. Um if you can go ahead and put it in the chat while I inform everyone about the election. Um it is Tuesday, the thirteenth, which is next week. Polls open at seven AM and close at eight PM. Um check the Department of Education or on First State Educates website um for polling places because these are not your normal polling places. Uh you can, you can go to any open polling place in in the district, not your normal assigned one um to vote. Um you have to be eighteen or at least eighteen years old, a US citizen, and live in the district. You do not need to be a registered voter in order to vote in school board elections. So I don't see, we don't have any questions in the um comments, so apparently we did a great job tonight in answering everyone's questions. Um. So I'm going to go ahead and give a minute for everybody to wrap up um and give your little vote-for-me speech. So we're going to go in the opposite direction that we went um at the beginning. So we are going to start with District C, Laura Parsons first.
Yeah. As a mother of three kids, I care about kids, all kids, and I want to be part of a leadership team that is co- committed to achieving great things, and I want to bridge the gaps in the community to make things better than the past. I'm adamant that every single child and teacher in the district receives the support, encouragement, and physical and emotional resources that they need to reach and exceed their full potential and achieve every one of their wildest dreams. I care very deeply about the present and future of all children in Cape Henlopen and want to work collaboratively with the community, families, students, and teachers to improve on what Cape is already doing for our kids. If elected, I promise to work tirelessly to ensure the well-being, excellence, and safety of all children in our community. Thank you so much.
All right, Patty?
My number one role will always be to advocate for our children. That passion drives me to want to serve every family, collaborate with our staff, and push for what's best for our students in our district. I believe that every child deserves a strong advocate. Every parent deserves a voice, and every educator deserves our full support. If elected, I will prioritize the well-being of our students and staff, making sure mental health and safety and belonging are at the forefront, champion classrooms that reflect the strength of our differences through culturally responsive teaching, equitable access to resources, and truly inclusive practices, practicing fiscal responsibility, ensuring our resources are wi- our resources are wisely managed and directed toward what matters most, student success, building partnerships with parents, educators, and wider the community. I'm not just running for a seat. I'm running for our children, our educators, and our community. I'm ready to work hard, listen closely, and serve with integrity. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And then for our at-large district um candidates, we have Chris Lovin- Lovin' Gus.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much for inviting us to this. Um if I'm elected, the biggest thing that I want to do is be a big advocate to our teachers and to our students. Our teachers deserve everything. Uh they're on the front lines every day. Uh they are the ones that are teaching our students. They need to have the proper things in order to teach the kids. I want to be open to I wanna be open to our community to let them know with transparency uh, when a referendum is coming around exactly what we're gonna do and what we need to do with the money. Uh, my number is three oh two, three eight one, two two nine four. If anyone ever needs to ask a question, uh, I am open for uh, any uh, question and answer time. Thank you.
All right. And then we have Bill Collett.
I've, I've been truly blessed to have been uh, in this thing of called education for almost fifty years. And I, when I look at it, uh, uh, there's one thing that keeps coming up in that whether it's from elementary, junior high, college, higher education and back to high school, young people need adult supervision. They need adults minding the store and they need adults support. And I've been again blessed to have worked in the Cape and Lopen District two times. I, I certainly am partial, but I do believe that we have, if not the best, one of the best school districts in the uh, state of Delaware and other states as well. And I, when elected, I look forward to continually helping young people do their best and realize the American dream, put in their best uh, self forward.
Okay, uh, before we end, we did have a couple of questions. Um, and since we have a minute or two, we're gonna do a little rapid-fire. So you have less than a minute um, to answer the question. We're gonna start with at-large districts and I think it's time for Bill to go first. So, how will you protect the ability of teachers to teach the facts? Bill?
Well, I, I, I think I know that we at Cape and Lopen have a, a mission statement that talks about diversity, inclusion and equity. And I have been told that we're not moving away from that uh, that mission statement. And I do believe as long as we have that, we'll be able to do that.
Okay, thank you. And Chris?
I think every teacher wants to uh, do their best uh, to teach our children uh, the proper things. Uh, you know, they have guidelines that they, that they need to go by, but uh, nurturing kids and uh, I don't think there's any teacher in our district that would not teach the facts. Thank you.
Laura?
I, 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 I agree with both. I think that our teachers our, are doing this uh, very effectively. And I believe our po- our school district has policies that are in place that protect the rights of the teachers and the students so that they have the freedom to teach effectively.
Okay, Patty?
Um, ensuring that our teachers can teach curriculum that reflects the diversity of our students and community will always be a top priority. I believe when we provide our students with a well-rounded, honest education that embraces all perspectives and we empower them to become informed, compassionate and engaged students. So I will always support teachers to be able to teach fact, you know, curriculum that they see fit.
Okay, so we have one other quick one and I think it's actually a very good one for us to end on. So we are gonna go over a couple minutes. But here is the question. What is the single most pressing issue facing the district? Okay, what is the single most pressing issue facing the district? Excellent question, whoever asked that. So we are going to go to stay with District C and I think ah, Patty goes first?
Um, for me, I think our district kinda has, we have two different ones. We have one when it comes to our physical buildings is our growth. Our community is changing tremendously. Our classrooms are becoming crowded. Our teachers are becoming overwhelmed. I think we need to address that by either uh, referendum or the impact fees. As students as a whole, I think mental health is our um, is a very pressing factor that we need to address, um, especially our middle-school age kids. Um, by doing that, like I've said previous, I would love to add um, to our school strictly just mental health counselors and take some of the weight and um, pressure off of our social workers and our site, school psychologists that are in the buildings every single day. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Laura.
Our cr- our greatest challenge is the growth in our community. Our schools are over, overfilled and we need the proper resources to be able to effectively teach our children and they need, need safe environments to do so. We, it's, we do need a referendum to get passed. If we can't make ends meet, hard decisions are gonna have to be made. We don't wanna have to do reductions in force, cut activities, per, leave our teachers without raises. So it's having the funds to appropriately match our growth.
All right. And now we have Chris.
Growth is number one. Um, when we look at our district, I live in the Milton area. Like I said, born and raised here. I'm looking within the next five to six years, we're looking at almost fourteen hundred new homes uh, just in our area, not counting around the Lewis Rehoboth. Uh, our district is big. People really don't realize how big our district is. When you go from Slaughter Neck to to Long Neck to uh, you know, Milton on outskirts of Georgetown, Harbison, or we have a big district. And everyone wants to get to the beach. And so it's just growing, growing, growing. Um, you know, if a referendum comes about, then that's what we're gonna have to do. But right now, uh, we know that the, the high school needs uh, more room. We need to move the administrative building. We have property that we could actually do that without having uh, to spend a lot of money as far as buying property as of right now. Uh, but yes, um, you know, building in this area.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Chris. I wanna thank all of our candidates um, for showing up tonight. Um, it's been great to um, hear some of your insights. Uh, this has been uh, recorded and livestreamed on uh, First State Educates uh, Facebook page and it will be found on, I believe on the Facebook page and possibly on their website. Um, so that you can share um, and make sure that you have everybody um, that you know, get out and vote. So thank you all, everyone, for being here and thank you for the community for listening in.